You're listening to Good Morning Gwinnett, a division of Noise Media Network. Hosted by Audrey Bell Kearney, sharing stories about people and places around beautiful Gwinnett County and beyond. Monday through Thursday at 10 a.m. Southern Living at its best.
Good morning, good morning, good morning to all my Gwinetians out there and all of my friends around the world. How you doing this morning? Happy Father's Day, happy belated Father's Day to all of the great fathers out there. Hope you guys had a really, really, really nice day. I hope you got some of the gifts that you got. You know, it's so crazy because a lot of the times, men always say stuff like, we don't get good gifts. Nobody thinks about us. I think for me, I don't mind getting great gifts, it's just that I never know what to get. So, when it's time about Father's Day gifts, like, I never know what to get to get my husband or my uncle. So, I just get them what I think, what I think they like. For my husband and uncle, it's a scratch off, right? That's what they like. So, that's what they got. I got them cologne though, because my uncle, my uncle and my husband, they both like to smell good. My, I think my uncle liked to smell even more so, uh, smell good even more so than my husband's. Because he loves his cologne, like, he never runs out of cologne. Soon as he gets low, he's like, hey, order me some more cologne. So, I bought him some cologne, I bought both of them some cologne and some scratch off. So, I think they had fun, plus they went fishing. So, they did something that they like. I would have got some fishing poles, but I didn't know exactly what to get. So, I didn't, I didn't get them. Um, but next year, I think I know what I'm gonna get. So, I'm the type of person, I like to buy on purpose. Like, I don't like to just buy randomly. I like to buy on purpose. So, I listen throughout the year for like, things that you say you want, and I try to get those things if I can. I don't like to just buy stuff just to be buying it. Like, you know what I mean? Like, some people just buy stuff, no rhyme, no reason. That's not me. I like to buy on purpose. So, if I'm gonna get you something, it's gonna be something that you actually want or like or need, not just, just not just random stuff. So, you know, I'm not gonna go there and buy you like a, a knife, a knife set when I know, what are you gonna do with that? Like, that's useless, you know what I mean? And I'm not gonna buy you another, a hair clipper set when I already know you got five. So, that, that's useless, you know? Um, they all do the same thing, cut hair. So, I'm not that person, and it's so crazy, because when you go shopping for stuff, and I did, when you go shopping for stuff, you see the same stuff, like, you see a beard kit, you see some hair clippers, I think I saw a basketball, like, I don't know, I buy on purpose. But anyway, I hope you guys had a wonderful, um, a wonderful Father's Day. It is a beautiful day here in Gwinnett County. Right now, it's seventy-five degrees, going to a high of ninety-two. It's beautiful outside right now, but ninety-two is gonna be a scorcher, you hear what I'm saying? Um, I went outside this morning, sat on the deck, it was beautiful, it was amazing, but I know at ninety-two degrees, it's gonna be hot. It was, it went up, it got up to like a hundred this past weekend. Like, we, we were getting in the car, it was like a hundred and four degrees. I'm like, oh my God, and it was crazy, because normally, in my house, it is freezing with the air conditioner on, right? It was, it was not freezing at all. I had to check it and make sure it was working, like, wait a minute. And, because normally it's freezing, to the point where you'd be sitting up there with a, with a blanket on, like, oh my God, it's cold. Not this past weekend, it was hot, it was so hot, I was like, first of all, is it working right? Because, you know, it's about to be a hundred degrees, so, anyway, it's a beautiful day. It's also, okay, now listen, I'm about to mess this up, maybe not. International Nystagmus Day, Nystagmus Awareness Day. Don't know what nystagmus is, but it's Nystagmus, N-Y-S-T-A-G-M-U-S, Nystagmus Awareness Day. Never heard of that, don't know what it is? I'm gonna look that up though, because I wanna know. As a matter of fact, you know, Google right at your fingertips, let's look up, see what nystagmus is. I've never heard of that before, N-Y-S-T, uh, Y, no, no, I'm about to spell it wrong, nystagmus. Okay. I'm probably pronouncing it wrong too, but I've never heard of it. It's an underlying condition, um, congenital, is passed to parents, from parents, it's some kind of condition, it's always for the eye. It's a eye condition. Okay, never, oh, like stigmatism, I guess. Okay. Alright, so that's what Nystagmus Day is. It could be cataracts or strabias, strab, shabebis, strabibis, stribis something, I'm messing that up, y'all. Anyway, I just, I need to know what that was, because I've never heard of that before. It's National American Eagle Day, it's National Hype with the Geek Day, so you know geek hype with the geek. It's National Ice Cream Soda Day, that sounds like very nineteen-fifties-ish, National Ice Cream Soda Day. Somebody loves that though, I'm sure. National Vanilla Milkshake Day, oh, go ahead, get you one, get you, get you a milkshake. Alright, have a good time, it's hot enough. Ice cream soda and a milkshake? I know somebody's saying, what's the difference? One is made with the soda. I, I don't like those. I, I think back in the day, they used to call them floats, where they put the ice cream on top of the soda. Never liked that. I don't need to mix ice cream and soda, not a big soda drinker anyway, but to put ice cream on top of, I know, some people love it though. Um, so, anyway, those are your national days for today. Let's get on with these Horus Scorps brought to you by Notre Astral, Michael Thasson. Before I wanna do that, I wanna give some, some birthday shout-outs. A lot of people have birthdays this weekend, so I wanna give a shout-out. God, doggy, I don't, I forgot who I'm supposed to give a shout-out to. I'm, I'm talking about a lot of people have birthdays, a lot of people did have birthdays, and, um, it's so crazy, because I'm like, wait a minute, I'm forgetting some birthdays. First of all, we had Father's Day, I have a whole calendar of people, but what, what did I do with the days? Anyway, happy birthday to all the birthdays, uh, birthday people who had birthdays this, uh, this week. I, I had a list of them, I don't know what I did with the list. Happy birthday, y'all, many, many more, next time I remember your names, it was a lot of them too, y'all. And I was like, yeah, I'm gonna wish all these people a happy birthday, and I'm totally blank right now. I should have just written it down, but I thought I could remember, now I'm totally like, just, just totally blank. Anyway, let's get on with these Horus Scorps brought to you by Notre Astral, Michael Thasson. For today, Monday, June the twentieth, we're gonna kick it off like we always do, and that is with Aries. Enlist workers in order to get the job done on time. Home improvement projects will enhance your residence and bring your family closer together. Get on top of, get on top of it, if you're being harassed or held back. Whatever it is, get on top of it, that way you not harassed, you not being held back, get on top of it. And in the meantime, enlist your coworkers to get the job done on time. Do what you gotta do to get, to hit, hit the deadline. If you have to enlist the work, the help of your coworkers, do so. You're just gonna owe somebody a favor, that's all. Some people don't wanna ask for favors, because they don't wanna, they don't wanna owe anybody anything. Here's the thing, is it a favor that's gonna help you get ahead in what you're trying to do? That's all I'm asking. If it makes sense, then do it. Taurus, you may exaggerate your emotional situation. If you can't get ahead in your company, with the company you're with, perhaps it's time to move on. Arguments with children or friends may leave you steaming. Alright, if you can't get ahead, you might wanna reevaluate where you are, and decide if this is where you wanna stay, right? If this is the place you wanna stay, if you're not making the moves in that place where you are right now, and you don't see a clear path to getting ahead, it may be time for you to say, you know what, say la vie, I gotta go, bye-bye, hasta mañana, all of that. Think about that thing. Gemini, reevaluate your situation. Your ability to come up with original ideas will bring recognition from superiors. Find a way to consolidate. Yes, listen, go through everything, if you, listen, if you got one in the garages that look like my garage, go through that thing. I need to go through mine, it's just hot right now, and I'm like, I do not feel like being bothered, but there is stuff that came with me in the mood that should not have come, like a lot of it. And I'm like, oh my God, but just going out there in the garage is, like, I don't like to do it, but when the fall comes around, because it's too hot right now, when the fall comes around, I'm gonna consolidate. So, maybe you need to consolidate your garage, maybe it's a closet in your house, maybe it's your bills. Just do some consolidation, get rid of some stuff, you're gonna feel better, Gemini. You're gonna feel a lot lighter, for real, consolidate some weight, I don't know, that sounds more easier than it is to be done, I get it. Cancer, deception in your home is evident. Don't beat around the bush. You can make a difference if you offer your help at functions that involve children. Use your intellectual approach to get best results. Alright, use your intellectual approach, right? You're smart, sure enough, you're smart. Do some thinking, problem solve, use what you got to get what you want intellectually today. That's what, I feel like, I feel like I'm like better, right? You got to use what you got to get what you want. You better think, okay, messing that up. Listen, all these old songs are the songs my mom used to play. So, that's why I know, I don't know all the words, but I can, I can, uh, give you some, at least a, a verse, maybe. Leo, deceit with coworkers, that's, it's apparent, it is apparent, you may find yourself in a bit, a bit frazzled if you allow someone to goad you into an unsavory debate. Be careful if friends ask you for advice. Yes, they could be asking you for advice, but do they really want the answers? You know what I'm saying? So, just be careful. I know you want, you wanna give them your answer, you wanna give them your opinion, but do they really want that? Or are they just looking for somebody to vent to? Because a lot of times, they don't really want our, they really don't want our opinion. They're talking, they just want you to listen. So, be careful when you give, um, uh, when the friends ask you for advice, because they could be trying to, trying to trick you too, to see what, see where your head is. They really don't want it, they just wanna see your thoughts on it, right? For real. Virgo, you are best to back away from commitment. Uh-oh, you can meet potential new mates, but make sure that they aren't already committed to someone else. You may have more people on your domestic scene than anticipated. Alright, listen here, Virgo, don't you go start no love triangle. If you know that that person is committed, then say, you know what, come back and holler at me when you're free, like, totally free. Not free, because you say you free, like, free, like detached, right? And the other thing to that though is, even if they came back to you tomorrow and said they're detached, are they really? That's really soon. If they're in a situation right now, and they come out and say, yeah, we, you know, we split yesterday, eh, you might wanna be a little bit cautious with that, Virgo. Just a little bit, because that's really soon, right? Are you really totally detached in, in a day, a week, a month, even a year? You gotta ask yourself that. Don't get caught up. Alright, I'm gonna go to a song, I'll be right back after this song to bring you more of the Horus Scorps brought to you by Notre Astral, Michael Thasson, stay tuned. Welcome back, welcome back, it's your girl Audrey Bell Kearney, bringing you the Daily Horus Scorps, brought to you by Notre Astral, Michael Thasson. We're gonna pick it up with Libra. You will easily capture the interest of those you talk to. Elders may need your help, go out with friends. Alright, so, so elder person's gonna need your help, Libra, you know, and help them, you know what I'm saying? If they need your help, then help them. Um, it's, I gotta tell y'all a story. It was, it was a, it was a heartfelt story, so, so, every Friday night, my husband and I go on date night. Here lately, probably the last four or five months, my daughter has been, and the baby have, they've been going on date night with us on Friday, right? And, um, I love fried crab, so, that's what I like to eat on Friday nights, and my husband likes them too. And so, but it's, and it's four different restaurants that we've gone to. We used to go to this one all the time, that was right here in Lawrenceville, close to the house, and then they decided to, I think they sold to a new company. Alright, so, I do eat my, I do eat butter with the fried crabs, but not a lot. Surprisingly enough, when I eat fried crabs, I don't eat a lot of butter. But the butter that, the one that we, we go to that's close to the house is nasty, it's bitter, it's disgusting. I said, that is not butter, I don't know what that is, it's nasty. So, this past Friday night, um, I said to my daughter, it's like, yeah, I don't think I wanna go to that one, because I don't like the way the butter tastes. So, there's another one that recently opened up on Riverside Parkway in Lawrenceville. I said, let's go to that one, right? So, they said, okay. And so, I told my husband, I said, I don't wanna go to the one we went to last week, I don't like the butter, it tastes bitter, I don't wanna go there. Let's go to the one on Riverside, because I didn't feel like going to the Louvre, and then the other one is in Norcross. So, I was like, I don't wanna go either one of those, I don't feel like driving. Well, I didn't say that, I just knew I didn't wanna go, because I didn't feel like driving. And, um, I said, let's go to the one on Riverside. So, Riverside is pretty, pretty new, so he said, okay. Kinda felt like he was a little bit hesitant though, but he said, okay. So, we go there, and we, we're having dinner, whatever, and it's a group of, it's a group of men up at the table, be like, two tables up before us, and it's a lot of them. So, they got like a booth and a table, and it's about, probably about eight, eight or nine of them. So, they had like a table and a booth that was across from each other, so, you know, we didn't pay them any mind, you know, we spoke and stuff and kept it moving. And then, um, when we got ready to go and pay our check, the waitress said, they paid for your dinner already. And I'm like, who? And it's like the man up front, my husband and daughter had already said, I think they're paying for our dinner. I'm like, why would they do that? Right, why would they pay for our dinner? And so, um, sure enough, they paid for our dinner, and it was so crazy, because the gentleman that actually played, he was in a wheelchair. And, um, I don't know, I just felt like, I felt like, and, because I used to, listen, my mom, my mom was my heart, right? And she walked with a walker, and I did anything she asked me to do. I remember talking to my, my cousin one time, this is kinda funny. I, I remember talking to my cousin one time, and, um, we were talking about our parents. And so, I said to her, I'll do anything for my mom and her dad, because her dad lives with me. I said, I'll do anything for them. She said, not me. And I'm like, in my mind, I'm like, really? She said she wish, like, my mother can't come here and do nothing, she, she's, because her, her mother used to argue all the time. Me and my mom didn't argue, right? As she got older, um, she would just say stuff without thinking about it, but we didn't argue, right? She would just say it, and I'll say something back, and then she stopped talking to me for about a, about a few hours, and then she'll talk to me again. But we didn't argue. But my cousin, like, yeah, I'm not doing all that for them. This is what she said to me, which is hilarious. But for me, that was my mom, you know, and I would do anything for my mom. So, my mom walked with a walker, her brother walked with a crutch, because he had a stroke. And so, I take, I took care of both of them, and I take care of him still right now, because he still lives with me. So, I felt like, that was a, that was an angel move, for, for that man to pay for our dinner, and it wasn't cheap. You know, he paid, and he didn't flinch, and so, I was like, wow, and let me tell you, I was having a rough day Friday evening. By the time I got to dinner, I was not in the best, best, I was not my best me, I was having a rough moment. And after he paid for dinner, I was just really like, I don't know, it just felt good, but I wanted to cry, but I didn't, because I was like, wow. Because you know, sometimes you feel like, you feel like people don't understand, like, I think, because you're the strong one, people think you're supposed to be strong all the time, right? As if I don't have like feelings, and so, him, for him to do that was very touching. And I said all that to say, um, Libra, help an elder, right? You never know what kinda impact that's gonna make on that person, and you never know what kinda impact, you know, that person can make on you, you know? And I, and I, and I looked at that man, he was in a wheelchair, he was so nice, and he was so bubbly. So, what happened was, when we got ready to leave, he and his friends were still outside. And, um, I walked outside, and I put my, my arms around his shoulder, and I said, thank you. He said, she told you? I was like, yeah, she told us. He was like, well, you're welcome, but he was so, it was, it was just a sweet gesture, y'all. And I don't know why he did it, I didn't even ask him why, I just said, thank you, you know? Because it made me feel better, because I was really in a funk at that, at that moment, um, something that had happened earlier, and I was trying to shake it off and enjoy my dinner. And after he did that, I just, I was, I was, I was touched, touched to the point where I really wanted to just cry. But I was like, nope, not gonna cry, I'm gonna be grateful. And, and people that know me know, I don't cry easily, so if I wanna cry, it must be something that was very touching, or very hurting, because I'm not a crier at all. No, not at all. I surprise myself when I get teared up sometime, like, oh, girl, you wanna cry? Anyway, that was a long story. Anyway, help an elder, Libra. Scorpio, advancement can be yours if you are assertive in, um, in your approach. Get back to basics and reevaluate what is important in life. Don't expect anything for nothing, or you won't, and you won't be disappointed. Alright, here's the thing, Scorpio, get back to the basics and reevaluate what's important. When I tell you, um, sometimes we have to just stop and take a minute, it's so funny, because, um, I was, I was on the porch this morning, and I was thinking about my business, I was thinking about my plans for my business, I was thinking about what's important right now to me. I know what was important when I started, and what's weird is, my mission has changed a lot. And the thing that was important to me when I first started, it's not that important anymore, but the mission is important. Before, it was like the money, now it's like the mission. So, um, sometimes you just have to reevaluate what's important. Of course, my family and my friends are important to me, they, they're always first, you know, right, right after God. Um, so they're really second, so God is first, and then my family, then everything else falls after that. So, just take some time to reevaluate, go back to the basics, look at where you are, where you've been, and where you wanna go. Now, don't stand, don't stand at where you've been, just take a look at it, right? Take a look at it, okay, this is where I was, here's the progress I've made, here's what I would like to do. Here's what's not important anymore, and here's what's super important right now. Just take a minute for that, Scorpio. Sagittarius, spend some time on yourself. Sudden disruptions will cause upset and change, and, and change of routine in your home environment. You may need to make a choice. Alright, listen, put your big boy underwears on and your big girl panties, and make the choice. I get it, Sag, sometimes this is hard to make them choices, but this is the day that you have to make a choice. And yes, it may be hard, but make, take some time, reevaluate to make sure you make the right choice, but make a choice. Because not to make a choice, is to make a choice, just so you know. Capricorn, you need more space for the whole family. You may, um, family may not want to get involved, but, listen, family may not want to get involved, but an entrepreneur will. Take positive actions. Alright, listen, Capricorn, if your family does not want to get involved in your, in your business venture, don't push them. Because if they don't understand what you're doing, if they can't see the vision, then don't involve them. Talk to another entrepreneur, right? Share your idea with that person, right? See what you, see what kinda feedback you can get from that person, because family may not understand. I had someone say to me, which was hilarious, and this person is an entrepreneur, but I know my family don't know what I do. They know I do a podcast, that's about all they know, and I, and, and that's enough, I guess. Because they don't understand, they don't ask questions like, hey, how's it going, what you doing? They don't ask those questions, so they don't know what I do, they know I do a podcast. If they knew all the stuff that I actually did, they'd probably be like, oh my God. So, don't, don't, listen, don't be upset with your family. If they don't wanna get involved, that's okay, because they probably don't need to be involved. Talk to somebody else, talk to another entrepreneur, because that person may wanna get involved. Be careful though, don't talk to the entrepreneur that's a snake. Don't talk to the entrepreneur that steals everybody ideas, I know some of them, soon as you tell them an idea, they steal it. Don't talk to that person. I'm just saying. Aquarius, offers of joint ventures are likely. You may have more people on your domestic scene than you anticipated. You may make, you may need to make a few alterations for your living arrangements. You got a lot going on, it's a lot of folks in your house, you gotta make some arrangements, all of that, too many people on the scene right now. I get it, you might wanna upgrade a little bit, Aquarius, but here's the thing, make sure that you can afford the upgrade. If you can't, then somebody may need to leave, I'm just kidding, don't put nobody out. In the meantime, on the meantime, offers of joint ventures are likely. They may be likely, but should you accept those joint ventures, do your due diligence, Aquarius. Make sure that something is gonna benefit everybody that's involved, for the good, right? Make sure you're not just chasing money, and make sure that the venture makes sense for you and where you're trying to go. Make sure that it makes sense that, for the people that you're trying to work with, to be your partners. All of that stuff is important. Stop chasing money, don't chase it. Alright, cool. Alright, last but not least, my fellow fish Pisces, try not to lose your cool and make your point known. Hmm, your reputation will be affected. This is a good day to check out your investments. Let me tell y'all something, first of all, I'm gonna try not to lose my cool. When my Horus Scorps says something like that, I'm very conscious, so I try my best, nah, I gotta go get my car fixed after this. So, I felt like I needed to hear that before I leave, and to make my point known, I, there was a situation yesterday. I was very calm, but I think I made my point known. So, I, I did good yesterday, I'm gonna try to do, I'm gonna do the best that I can today. Your reputation will be affected. Here's the thing, fish, whatever you're doing, make sure that your reputation is affected, it's affected in a good way. That means you need to be on your best behavior, put out your best work, be your, be your best excellent self. So, if your reputation is affected, it's affected for the good, okay? Okay. On the flip side, check out your investments, oh, let me tell you something. I looked at my cryptos, I looked at my crypto, my crypto folder, my crypto wallet, that baby looks bad. Hmm, it look, I was like, oh my God, I can't look at this no more. Woo, let me tell you something, but you know, people that invest, they're used to that. Like, they're used to seeing their portfolio go up and down. My crypto investments, they look horrible. I don't even wanna look at them, so I'm not looking at anything unless they went up. And I got a bunch of them in three different accounts, I'm like, ooh my God, they look awful. Because, because crypto is not doing well right now. Now, yeah, it's gonna come back, so, listen, it's gonna come back, and I'll be ready, because I'm gonna, I'm about to buy some more. But when I look at where it was and where it is, like, oh, what happened? So, maybe I will take a peep at them, because after that first, first dip, I was like, ooh, I can't look at this anymore, because this is, this is scary. Anyway, I'm gonna look at my investments, and I'm gonna, you know, I'm gonna try to keep my cool and make my point known. Alright, and I'm gonna protect my rep, baby, protect your rep. Alright, that's all the Horus Scorps I got for you today. I'll be back again tomorrow at ten a.m. to bring you more of the Horus Scorps, brought to you by Notre Astral, Michael Thasson. Now, I'm about to get on to some news, but I gotta tell y'all something, so this is me getting some rest, right? When I sleep well, I tend to be a little bit funnier, not just because I wanna be funny, but because I, something I read that makes me laugh, right? And even though this story is criminal, to me, it was funny when I saw it. And so, only funny because, okay, I'm just gonna tell y'all, so, listen, I know some people are gonna say, Audrey, that's not funny. I get it, it, to me, it was funny, it's not funny, but what I'm about to say is kinda like, could be considered funny. But I just, it, it, it's a criminal story, right? Anyway, let me just tell you a story, so, I get to the AJC this morning, so that's the Atlanta Journal-Constitution, that's the news site, where I get my news from, and I get my news from Gwinnett, Gwinnett Deli Post. And I get to the, I get to the story in the, in the AJC, right? And I'm not gonna tell you the headlines, what I'm gonna say is, um, I'm gonna say, over in Brookhaven, at the Orange Massage, at the Orange Massage and Sauna One Spas, yeah, they, they're giving out happy endings over there. Let me just say that. And it was funny, because that's the first thing that came to my mind, oh man, they're giving out happy endings over at Orange Massage and Sauna One. So, these are spas over in Brookhaven, and apparently, there have been some happy endings given out over there, and police had to make some arrests. But it was the happy ending part that made me laugh, and that, that's not in the article. I'm, I'm, it was to me when I read it, I was like, oh geez, they're giving out happy endings over at a Orange Massage and Sauna One. So, these are two different spas that are five hundred feet away from each other over in, um, Brookhaven. And they're both giving out happy endings over there, so police had to go over there and make some arrests. And, uh, one person was just about to get his happy ending, and, um, he was, he was, they found him, the way he came into this world naked. So, y'all can read between the lines, but anyway, if you wanna read the whole story, and when I read it, it's, it's, it's not funny. It's the happy ending part that stuck in my head, that was like, oh, okay. Anyway, you wanna read the full story, go to ajc.com, it's there. Oh God, speaking of, speaking of stories that are not funny, but I'm thinking, okay, really? So, there's a charity in Buford that shut down, because, um, it's called Little Kings and Little Queen, Little Kings and Queens, right? Apparently, allegedly, allegedly, according to the AJC again, not only, they, they, they had this, uh, they had a whole thing going on. So, they got awards, have been the best charity, you know, they got, been recognized. Well, apparently, the Kings and Queens was the Kings of Spades and the Queens of Heart, baby, because allegedly, you know, they had a, they had a gambling thing going on. So, the Kings and Queens, was it, we thought it was little kids that they were helping. Little Kings and Little Queens, Little King of Spades, Little Queens of Heart going on back then in the back room, they were playing some cards. So, allegedly, they had a gambling ring going on, and, um, they, I haven't heard, I haven't seen anything about them saying it's not true yet, they got a- they I haven't heard I haven't seen anything about them saying it's not true yet they got arrested um and so again not funny but when I saw the title of the the nonprofit and then I saw that the charge that they were being charged for the first thing that came to my mind was the King of Spades and Queen of Hearts little the so the name of the place is Little Kings and Queens and the first thing came to my mind when I saw that like okay so they're busted for gambling Little Kings so Kings of Kings of Spade Queens of Heart came to mind not funny y'all but it was funny when I thought about it so I just had to share my funny thought anyway I think this is a this is pretty bad because well all both of them are pretty bad well depends on who you ask um but this one right here they have gotten awards for some 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 great work that's been done in the community right and now their their mission and their and what they're doing is gonna be tarnished by this charge of of gambling illegally gambling and so um that's the sad part because now a a a organization that has been helping so many and has been recognized for helping so many now they're gonna be probably shut down for illegal gambling so I don't know what their story is but in AJC um I guess they'll make a statement soon I think that sucks alright but those are my those are my oh god I don't wanna call them funny story but yeah just the just the story wrapped around the you gotta have a a sense of humor sometimes so when you think about a an organization called Little Kings and Queens and then you figure out you find out that they they get shut down for gambling if you play cards which I do if you play cards the cards card deck is gonna come to your mind just like you know you see massage parlor and police and naked happy endings come to mind I'm just saying I'm just saying anyway I'm going to a song I'll be right back after the song to bring you more of what's going on in and around Gwinnett County and beyond stay tuned welcome back welcome back it's your girl Audrey Bell Kearney give you the daily rundown about what's going on in and around Gwinnett County so um the school board has a adopted a budget of two point eight billion dollars um which is pretty cool for well I think it's gonna be good for everybody involved because right now the um the counties the Gwinnett County School Board adopted the budget that includes employee raises new jobs and more pre K classes um you know it's crazy cuz here in Georgia uh that wasn't a thing pre K in Jersey pre K was a thing like they were pre K uh when I found out that they didn't have pre K I'm like what no pre K so now um Gwinnett County does have a pre K program that's gonna be in eight schools but right now said the budget total is about two point eight billion and will take effect July first which is next week is it next week yeah next week next next Friday I think it is the budget the adopt a budget is less than the current budget because the um district has spent federal pandemic funds the general fund which covers most of the district's operating costs will increase by fifty eight point five million dollars to more than one point nine billion dollars so um when you look at the budget they're going to use that money to um the budget will provide raises through uh a salary step increase for nearly all teachers and forty three percent of those other employee employees teachers also get a two thousand dollar cost of living pay uh living raise um other employees will receive a cost of living raise of at least four percent they also reduced the um the millage rate right to um they said we suggest we they they dropped the millage rate to twenty point twenty point six five mils um because and that's like zero point seven mils less than the current rate they dropped that because they wanted to make sure that they can do the budget um also right now Gwinnett is also raising minimum minimum salaries the new minimum salary wage minimum wage will be thirteen fifty per hour according to the chief financial officer officer um Jeff Hoffren Heffren um the lowest earning employee right now in the district is paid about nine dollars an hour so they're gonna raise the minimum wage to thirteen fifty Heffren also said the district wants to bump the minimum wage up to fifteen dollars per hour within a year or two and check this out they're hiring a hundred and eighty two teachers this year so they can reduce the class sizes that's a big thing um yeah that's a lot that's a lot the opening uh a second year high school in Buford created about two hundred new jobs already but they're gonna they and here's the thing a lot of teachers said they weren't coming back like they were like we're not coming back some retired some are just burned out from after the pandemic they're just tired so they're saying they're not coming back so right now they're gonna have positions for a hundred and eighty two teachers remember our school district the kid the number of kids in schools here in Gwinnett County is about a hundred and eighty thousand that's a lot of children y'all that's a lot of kids and then for the first time ever Gwinnett will provide general education pre K classes at eight schools in the upcoming school year so now you got more teachers that have to go into these programs in the school so the budget has been adopted and it's gonna kick off July first so kudos to the team over there making education a necessity speaking of education the last seat on the Gwinnett School Board comes down to a runoff yes it's a runoff baby it's coming down to the runoff the runoff election to represent District Four on the Gwinnett County School Board features an education professional endorsed by the current holder of the seat and a longtime involved parent and volunteer who believes the district is badly in need of a turnaround yeah so the winner of Tuesday's runoff between Adrian Simmons and Alexa Williams would tip the political balance of the board in Georgia's largest school district the Gwinnett as Gwinnett population has grown in recent decades the is politics have changed as well the county school board has been the latest political battlefront y'all know it's just been a battle Gwinnett School Board became the majority um became majority Democrat in twenty twenty one and the new board leadership voted to terminate the contract of longtime superintendent Jay Alvin Wilbank so it's it's all listen it's gonna the polls on the polls are gonna tell who's gonna beat up who's gonna hold that seat in in District Four um in the runoff you know um it says neither we don't know so right now it's a nonpartisan race so when they we drew the line after Clint Dixon said you know what we want this to be a nonpartisan race so we don't know whether or not you know it before it was like we knew who that person was if they were a Democrat if they were a partisan uh Republican we knew it was but now with nonpartisan is is not supposed to matter here's the thing though y'all here's the thing I'm just saying that if you know the people let me tell y'all something there are some people that I found out that were Republican I'm talking about staunch Republicans that I had no clue because the position they were running for was nonpartisan and I kept saying well why do they ever why don't they win well I found out they didn't win because they're they're probably Republican and that probably had a lot to do with it now for those of us who didn't know that you know we didn't know but for a lot of people they knew cuz I couldn't I couldn't understand why this this particular one person kept losing like every time they were running they would lose I'm like so someone said to me they're probably losing cuz they're Republican I was like oh I didn't know so these are nonpartisan races however if people know your party affiliations chances are you don't get the vote from them whatever party you're in even though it's nonpartisan it's just chances are you won't anyway the runoff is gonna is gonna determine who's gonna hold that seat um in twenty twenty um and the seat in District Four um because that that came down to a runoff so we'll find out who that person is pretty doggone soon after the runoff is over alright mark your calendar for this coming Saturday June the twenty fifth well let's let's start at the twenty second first so on June twenty second which is Wednesday um the community will have an opportunity to donate blood at Grayson City Hall yes so if you wanna donate blood you can the American Red Cross is in need of donations and a nationwide blood shortage yes it is a blood shortage schedule an appointment between ten AM and three PM and receive a five dollar gift card to a merchant of your choice um this is gonna be happening at Grayson City Hall in Grayson so if you wanna donate blood you can make an appointment um and that's gonna be between ten and three on the twenty second which is Wednesday you can donate you can get a five dollar gift card to anyone in the merchants I gotta tell you I don't like needles so I have never given blood intentionally unless I had to as unless it was a part of physical I just do not like needles like and it's so crazy because you know it's only a pinch but for some reason just to sit there and let somebody stick me it's like oh my god like that's like the most it's like people going to the dentist right I've heard people who say they have a horse that have nightmares about going to the dentist now that's not my case but I swear if I don't have to get stuck I'm not trying to get stuck but you wanna get blood please do because there is a shortage I wish I was so brave I'm not so I'm not afraid to say I'm not brave I'm not brave but if you are brave and you wanna give blood Grayson City Hall this coming Wednesday ten to three you need to make an appointment and then when you get there you're gonna get a five dollar gift card listen I don't know what your gift card is too but if you like Sam's on main they got good food I like Sam's on main so I'm just shout out to Sam's on main y'all need to be paying me but I do like your food so I ain't gonna even front alright so mark your calendar because Logan's Loganville Independence Day celebration is gonna start this weekend coming the twenty fifth the city will be celebrating on June twenty fifth from six to ten thirty PM at West Welton Park so community uh members will enjoy games and activities onsite food DJ entertainment live performances by the Lind Lindred Glenn Lindret Skinred Lindret Skinred Band skin folks okay skin folks that's what it says Skinred Lindret Skinred Skinfolks the fireworks will follow the concert so if you wanna do that you can go to Loganville they're gonna be at West Walton Park this coming Saturday from six to ten thirty they wanna get started soon because you know it goes down like Snellville is always on the fourth of July Lawrenceville is always on the third of July and then there's other ones and it's so weird because I think I've only gone to Lawrenceville fireworks once um I'm gonna go this year though and then I'm gonna go to Snellville I love fireworks I've always gone to fireworks I've always liked them and now to this day I'm like a little kid when it comes to fireworks some things you just never get over and that's one of them for me fireworks so um this put it on your calendar so you don't you don't forget it there was a lot of celebrations going on this past week too speaking of celebrations oh my goodness let me tell y'all this so this is listen so so uh uh Gwinnett Chat Gwinnett Chat which is an organization that is um that is that is ran by Ryan Cox and his team they help young people with mentoring right and so um they had an event this come this past Saturday it was listen y'all it was so nice first of all I got a chance to go to the Lawrenceville Arts Center which is gorgeous we had amazing food um the event was just amazing it was I just thought it was so freaking nice and I said after the event I said this is this is this is gonna be bigger next year this is gonna be a bigger event so it said the Dancing Stars of Gwinnett County so they had a great lineup of people it was just a really nice event so let me tell you who some of the people were who who competed and the and the dance so Dancing Stars of Gwinnett is kinda like you know um you know what's that thing Dancing With The Stars so this is Dancing Stars of Gwinnett I know this is gonna be bigger next year because one of my friends my friend Georgia who went with me she's like I'm dancing next year right and I was like are you really been Derek 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 J Wilson over at the Greater East Side Champion said I'm dancing next year so I already know it's gonna be bigger but this was such a great event it was so nice it was so classy it was just a nice evening out man it was just really nice and so let me tell you some of the people who competed and that was interesting it was a really interesting event so um Lawrenceville Councilwoman Marlene Taylor Crawford competed um one of the students in the program his name is Kevin um Kevin student at Paul Duke STEM High School he competed attorney Helen Kim Ho competed attorney BT Parker competed State Representative Park Cannon competed um JT Woo founder of pre pre preface project completed Samuel Richmond and his wife Melanie Richmond they competed Officer Terrence Barnes of Lawrenceville Police Department competed um Catherine Hardrick Board Member for Gwinnett Chat she can she competed and our very own Chairwoman of the Gwinnett Board of Education Dr. Therese Johnson competed let me tell y'all it this was it was so nice and we had judges sitting to the right it was it felt like I felt like it should have been livestream like I really felt like this should have been a livestream event and next year I'm gonna tell I'm gonna tell Ryan you know I think you should livestream it for the people who could not attend because I felt like this was such a classy event now mind you if you wanna get the full effect you gotta come because we had a great time networking I'm I think the way he had it laid out was so nice like we had about an hour of networking and hors d'oeuvres the food was freaking delicious like they got this I gotta tell y'all so the the caterer god what was the caterer name um proof of pudding proof is in the pudding a proof of pudding I think it's proof is in the pudding catering they made this little uh I don't know what is a sweet a spicy sweet pepper thing stuff with like goat cheese or something man I must ate twelve like I didn't eat any any real or I ate like a I ate like the little chicken on the stick one I think I had one of those and I had I had a meatball but I ate all the pepper things like I was like I love it was so good I had they had some empanadas I didn't like those but the little pepper thing I sat there ate all the little pepper thing they had all kinds of little things on the stick and on the on the toothpick delicious the event was so nice just talking to people networking taking pictures and so we did that from about we got there around five thirty some like from five thirty to seven we did that and then the event kicked off around seven o'clock it went smoothly and I mean it was quick it was just really nice and I know next year um Gwinnett Chat outreach is gonna do it's gonna be more people next year I already know it is because people I don't think people understood what was gonna happen until it actually happened and it was just so nice so what happened was we had a tie we had two ties we had a tie for uh was it second place I think we had a tie for sec no we had a tie for third place so we had a tie for third place the tie for third place was uh Lawrenceville Councilwoman Marlene Taylor Crawford she tied with JT Woo for third place that was hilarious like they tied so they had to have like we had to do the audience so we had judges but the judges they tied them right so that was a tie and so they they tied and then um second place there was no tie Catherine Hardic uh Hardrick she won that hands down for second place cuz she was really good then there was a tie for first place so the tie for first place was between um State Representative Park Cannon and Board Chairwoman of Gwinnett Board of Education Dr. Therese Johnson both of them were really good y'all like when Therese came out we was like yeah she's gonna win but then then Park came out was oh crap this is gonna be hard that was hard like I felt like they should have had two first place trophies because they to me it was just hard to pick like I and then it had to come down to Austin Thompson who was the the final judge should make a decision voted for Dr. Therese Johnson but that was a hard that was hard and you know it was crazy cuz they hugged each other and hugged it out and everything they did they had to do a dance off so the first place winner Therese Johnson Dr. Therese Johnson and Park Cannon had to do a dance off so so they danced it off with their partners and then Therese won but I still think it was hard I still think it was a tie Austin just had to break the tie so councilman Austin Thompson had to break the tie and he just went with you know he went with 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 Dr. Therese Johnson but I still think it was a tie but anybody it was a I can't say enough about the event it was classy it was beautiful it was you know we had people that were donating things I don't even think I understood next year I know that I'm gonna be a donator like I'm gonna donate something for the auction I didn't even every time I will see Catherine and Catherine is a she is a diehard every time I would see Catherine, and Catherine is a, she is a diehard. She's on the board, but she loves this organization. Whenever you meet her anywhere, she is talking about this organization. This is what she does. And I was telling Georgia, I said, let me tell you something. Catherine goes hard for Gwinnett Chat. She goes hard for this organization. When you wa- the first time I met Catherine, we were at somewhere, and she walked up to me, and I said, hi. She's like, hi! And soon as I said that, she just started telling me about Gwinnett Chat. I'm like, well, what is it? And she started, she goes hard for Gwinnett Chat. And that's what you need on your, you need people on your team that believe in the vision that much, that they go hard for you. She goes hard for it. So, she got an award from the, from the organization, because she goes so hard for it. And she won the second place dance off, cuz she really danced. She danced her butt off. So she did the thing. And so, you know, it's just amazing what you can do when you got people on your team that believe in your dreams. So, Ryan, kudos to you, man. Great event. Catherine, you guys put it together. And, and everybody that participated. You gotta have guts to get on stage and dance in front of a room full of people, right? You see Dancing with the Stars on TV, these people are like, they already used to be on TV, cuz they're stars. You got everyday people who are out here in the community fighting for your rights, fighting for your education, fighting for your, 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 your children, you know? That's a difference. You're not out here fighting for your safety. You're not out here on, like, dancing for people. You're not out here trying to entertain people. You're out here fighting. So, to put them on a, in a platform where they actually had to entertain us, it was really nice. And I can't say enough about it, because I just thought it was a really, really nice event. I'm looking forward to next year's event. Um, I know it's gonna probably even be better. I know for a fact it's probably gonna be bigger. Because I don't think people were expecting what they got, and it just ran so smoothly. And maybe there were hiccups behind the scene, but for those of us on the, on the front side, it was just nice. So, kudos to Ryan and Catherine and the team over at Gwinnett Chat, um, Outreach. You guys did a wonderful job, and I'm glad I was there to, to witness it all. And kudos to all of the people that actually participated in, in the dancing part of it. And kudos to the judges. We have some great judges. Like, we had one, her name was Dia. And she is, she's a performer, um, a professional performer. She was hilarious, but she sounded just like a real judge, y'all. Like, she, so every time it was time to, to score or give some information about who they were, she was the one giving the information. About, you know, what you did right, what you did wrong. And then some of the other judges got a chance to win. But it was just a really nice event. So check out gwinnettchat.org. They, the goal was to get enough money to buy then, so that they can take the kids around. And I, I bet you, I bet you that they did that. I bet you that they raised the funding. All right, so listen, that's all I got. I'm gonna go to my last song, then I'm gonna come back and give you my word of inspiration for today. So stay tuned. Welcome back, welcome back. So listen, guys, that's all I got for you. But before I go, I wanna give you my word of inspiration for today. So here goes. Says, don't wait. Time will never be just right. Oh, my goodness. Let me say it again. Don't wait. Time will never be just right. Napoleon Hill said that, and he was absolutely right. A lot of times, we wait for the perfect time to do everything. There is no perfect time. There is no perfect time to get married. There's no perfect time to have kids. There's no perfect time to lose weight. There's no perfect time to get a graduation. The perfect time is when you decide to start. That is the perfect time. That, listen, I don't think I had to say more about that. Stop waiting for the perfect time. There is no perfect time. Just do it. That's what Nike say. Nike say, just do it, y'all. Stop, again, it's gotta be perfect. This has to be perfect. That has to be perfect. There's no such thing as a perfect time. While you waiting on the perfect time, you're wasting time. Let me say that again. While you are waiting for the perfect time, you are wasting time. So stop wasting time trying to find the perfect time. There is no perfect time. The perfect time is right now, when you decide to start whatever that thing is that you've been waiting for the perfect time to do. So that's all I got for you today. Could've been anywhere in the world, but just spent the last one hour and one minute with me, and I love you and appreciate you for that. Listen, be sure to go to goodmorninggwinnett.com to listen to the past episodes there. And do me a favor, download the app from the App Store. Whether you have an iPhone or a Samsung phone, an Android phone, there is an app in the App Store for you for Good Morning Gwinnett. Download that app for me, y'all. Help me get to a million downloads. Download the app for me. It's free. Doesn't cost you anything. It's free. Download the app from the App Store. And also, be sure to share this show with your friends. I'll be back again tomorrow at ten AM, God willing. You guys stay safe out there. Until next time, my friends. Until next time, make it a great day. Bye, y'all.
You've been listening to Good Morning Gwinnett. Make sure to tune in Monday through Thursday at ten AM Eastern Time to find out what's happening around Gwinnett. If you liked this episode, subscribe now and share with your friends. To learn more about Noise Media Network, visit noisemedia.us.